Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 20th, 2012, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. As you may notice, we are missing one of our colleagues tonight, Vance Idlet, who underwent surgery down at MCV at the end of last week. He is doing well, I'm glad to say. It's all ventilator now, he should be in ICU for a few more days, and hoping to see him back here within three or four weeks. But his wife sends her thanks for all the thoughts and prayers extended to them during this ordeal. She certainly appreciates it, and I'm sure it worked, because he is doing very well now. And tonight, we're going to lead off with invocation. Reverend Dan Bergy from New Life Methodist, New Life Church is here. If you'd come up and lead us in invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, and if you wouldn't mind keeping Commissioner Idlet in your thoughts in doing so, too. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're so grateful to be able to be at this place tonight, together, with freedom and with privilege. Father, tonight, I do just want to offer up more prayers. For Commissioner Idlet, Lord God, I thank you so far for the doctors and for all the nurses that have taken care of him. Father, for quick and complete healing, and bring him back here with us. And so, we thank you ahead of time for that return. Father, I thank you for this great nation, for all those, I pray, that serve so faithfully at home and abroad. I pray for their safety today, and we thank you. We thank you for them and their hearts. Father, we open up as a nation, I pray, for the presidential elections that are coming up this fall. It's an opportunity, Lord God, to seek Your will for all of this country. And Father God, I thank you for these men and women that are standing before me tonight. Lord, give them a grace, give them honor, give them blessing, give them wisdom, as they make decisions for the citizens of Currituck County. And Lord God, we give you praise in all of these things. And we ask this, in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of amendments to the agenda tonight. We're going to delete Item C under Administrative Reports, Recommendation for Work with COA Apron, and also on the new business, the consent agenda of Item C3. There are no budget amendments to consider tonight, so we're dealing with those. Are there any other changes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, I had an appointment for the Economic Development Board, and I'd like to go ahead and put that on the agenda this evening, to make that appointment.
Okay, on the new business?
Yes.
Okay. About we put that on to B2?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Have a motion?
Sir?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry. And, next item's public comment. See, a number of people have signed up to speak about the horse tours. Let me just address that, to start with. Horse tours are not on the agenda as an action item tonight. We're not passing an ordinance on horse tours tonight. We are listening to comments, if you have something that you want to make about that. So, anybody that wants to address that, I'll give you a chance, even if you didn't sign up. But I have five people already, and we're glad to hear what you want to say. I am going to limit public comment to three minutes for each party, since I have already seven signed up to speak, and we want to get on with the meeting tonight. So, the first person I have signed up to speak is James Eller, who wants to speak to us about fire hydrants. If you'd come up and give us your name and address for the record, please, and then, please let me, you come up to three minutes, if you would.
James Eller, 107 Waters Drive, Moyawak District. The fire hydrant is an ongoing problem we've had for 15 years. And I first addressed this council at that time, and then I saw Bill Richardson, who was the county manager at that time, and to see what we could do about the problem. What it works out, too, is, let me read this, it'd be faster and better if I do this. "In 1996, while on the Homeowners Association Board, I was ordered to look into the possibility of securing water line extensions for fire hydrants in the community. A visit to Mr. Bill Richardson, county manager, resulted with his creating a committee of county employees, consistent of James Minns, who lived in a neighborhood, as did Jack Simonow, who was assistant manager, and Leland Gibbs, county water manager. They were to look into the feasibility and cost. Minns did the actual survey using a wheel device on a probable route. A cost was figured, and a plan to pay offered. It was to be a tax surcharge added for a period of five years, provided 75% of the property owner's signed agreeance. Mr. Richardson and Jack Simonow moved to a county outside of Charlotte, where they had been offered the same positions, with the large increase of salary. Dan Scanlon was appointed interim manager, and after a period, was approached about the existing problem that hadn't been resolved. He listened, asked some questions, and then said he would get back to me. He hasn't yet. A new 12-inch water line was installed during the upgrade to Tulsa Creek Road, that eventually ended at the new water tank built on 168, and included a pump house located at Tulsa Bay Colony. A stubout was added at Launch Landing Road, but was capped off. And that is a problem. We got, initially, we got a survey with the people that were in, in 1996. It's signed, saying that they did approve the idea of a surcharge tax. Well, some of them are dead, some of them are moved out. We don't have that many people here on this list originally. The question is, we do need a fire line, at least on Launch Landing Road, because it's one mile from where it's located on Tulsa Creek Road to Waters Drive, one mile. So, it requires pump trucks, tank trucks, et cetera. It would be easier if we had one line running on the east side of Launch Landing, where there's nothing in there, to have to be moved or changed, run the line in. I guess they use schedule 80, six inch, and maybe put three or four hydrants in. This would help a whole lot. And they also can use that line to tap in the existing line for added pressure, because we don't have any come Saturday, the weekend. Everybody's home. And there's a lot of three-bath room homes there on Waters Drive. So, pressure's kind of hard to come by. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Eller. Mr. Scanlon, would you care to offer any explanation related to the issues involved in running lines for hydrants and so on?
Well, this particular community is an older community, that when it was built, they installed less than six-inch water lines throughout the community. We do not install fire hydrants or anything less than a six-inch line. As Mr. Eller mentioned, there was a group put together. There's a cost associated with putting that line or installing a line in, to be able to provide fire coverage, and it kind of comes, and it comes down to what arrangements we're going to make to have that line installed, and who's the proper people to pay for that line. And if the board is willing to pass special assessments, that certainly is one of the options.
Well, I think the consideration we always give is, you know, can we meet the fire protection requirements with the equipment the fire departments have, with or without the lines? You know, if the lines are necessary, then obviously, that's a concern to us, but I know we have many areas where we have no water lines at all, which the fire department still provide protection, because they do have pump or capacity to actually service those areas and maintain the fire ratings.
I do know the volunteer fire department that serves this particular area, Crawford, was approaching the state or working with the state to see if they could get certified on a pump-and-haul operation. They bought apparatus that has larger capacity for water. It is manpower intense, and I believe they were trying to pursue an effort to have the state recognize their ability to do a pump-and-haul operation, as part of helping with the homeowner's insurance. I certainly can find out the results of that and get back with you.
Okay, that, or if we, you know, could at least have a, at least a brief feasibility study, as to what the projected cost might be, and what kind of assessment might be necessary to do that, so we can answer the question. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, from what I understand, Mr. Eller said that there was an agreement amongst the residents, and he had a petition with people that signed up that agreed to, for a special assessment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, I think maybe we need to start with what happened to that agreement. Is it feasible? Can it be done? And are they still willing to look at something like that? Mr. Scanlon said, if we're willing to do an assessment, if they're willing to do it, then that's one way to get it done.
Well, that was my intent, really, is first, let them know how much it would cost, because the 1996 cost wouldn't be relevant now. And they may refute that agreement. Of course, obviously, there's different parties involved, so at least this would give us an indication of what we're dealing with, and how much we've been involved in doing it. I don't assume you want to write us a blank check and have it start up? Okay? But we'll get you an answer, Mr. Eller. Thank you for coming. Mr. Foreman, you'd like to speak about the Headlights Club. Your name and address, please. Thank you.
Alan S. Foreman, 115 Acorn Lane, Point Harbor. I was here two weeks ago tonight. I am the vice president of the Old Oak Estates Homeowners Association. I take pride in keeping my property at its highest value, and Acorn Lane runs right behind the Headlights Club, which has various names. But after I left here two weeks ago, I talked to a couple of my neighbors, and one said to me, "Do you remember, two years ago, at 5:00 on a Sunday, a gentleman by the name of Robert Brown came knocking on our doors, and told us that he had just invested $200,000 into the club, allegedly owned by Mr. London? I then remembered him coming, knocking on my door, and I just wanted to relay that to you, in the event Mr. London is not telling the truth on any new applications, but he does have a $200,000 new investor." The other thing, allegedly, in today's East Elizabeth City Daily Advance, it said London or Brown was investing $250,000 to make improvements and alterations in the club. I thought I'd come up, and even though it's a 60-mile round trip from Point Harbor to here, I felt it was worth it, in my own interests. And Mrs. Collins, who was not feeling good, she was here two weeks ago, and needless to say, Mr. Richardson did a fantastic job in explaining what took place with Mr. London in 1994, whenever he made the original application. I hope Mr. Vance Idlet makes a quick recovery. I have a friend that had a liver transplant, very serious matter, and with the grace of God, he recovered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. All right, starting now to the horse tours. Bob White.
All right. Good evening. Bob White, I live in Swan Beach, Hilltop Road. Just have a few questions, while I was going through the proposal. It seems there's some question as to whether or not you're allowing four or five vehicles. In one section, or the license requiring section, I believe it states that each company will be allowed four vehicles. Then, in another section, it says that no more than five will operate at any given time, and it just seemed to be a little bit of disparage there, between whether it was four or five. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. I, being a tour operator, would prefer the five. Additionally, there was a clause in there about not stopping while on the roads in Carova. Seeing that's where the horses are, I would ask that that be removed, to allow us to stop, but in such a manner as to not impede traffic in Carova. And I think with some of the things you put forward in here, that will be addressed, just in the sheer volume of vehicle, or the lack of vehicles, under the new proposed ordinance, will reduce the size of the fleet, and thus, the traffic burdens in Carova. Also, there's a root clause in here, and I understand that maybe Charleston, South Carolina, was looked at, and how they run their tours. While the houses don't move, it makes it easier for those tour operators to provide a tour. But since the horses do migrate and move around, I would ask that that also be removed, and just allow us to continue. And again, I think traffic volume will obviously be addressed, and the reduction of the fleet, and therefore alleviate many of these problems that maybe went in because of the existing problems with the number of vehicles that are out there. Additionally, you had some times in there to operate, to stay out on the beach, and when we were allowed behind the dune. And I believe it's 7:00 PM, not to go behind the dune before 7:00 PM, and to be back out on the beach by 7:00 PM. On the morning time, I don't have a problem. We don't start tours until 8:00 in the morning. Wouldn't even impact the beach until 8:30, 8:45, somewhere in there. But on the evenings, during the summertime especially, I would ask that you move that back an hour to 8:00, or 7:30 at the latest. Maybe just June, July, August, or even mid-August is now. We're seeing the time change. Obviously, it's getting darker earlier, and that should be adjusted accordingly. And, so I'll just ask that you consider moving the evening time back later for the summer months, and then scaling it back as the days get shorter and shorter. That's about it this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Kim Hadrava.
Hello. Kim Hadrava, 1702 Ridge Road. I'm a full-time resident of Swan Beach, as well as I am a driver this year. It's been my first year to do that. I really did it just to make a little extra money, but also to kind of keep an eye out for the horses, because there are so many people out there that totally disregard any ordinance that is in place, whether it's petting or even chasing the horses. I can't tell you how many times I dial 911 while I'm on tour, or yell, scream at people for doing that. I'm in agreement with everything in this document, with the exception of two things. One is the specific route. The horses are not in a zoo. They're not going to be on a specific route. The people pay money to come out there and see the horses. The county and the state has promoted the horses, and spent money to do so. If you restrict the route, you're probably not going to hurt the tour company. They're probably going to take the 100% money-back guarantee away, and the people are going to pay to not see horses. I know, as a tour driver, I respect the property out there, and I rarely go west of Ocean Pearl, and that's pretty much the bulk of where the full-time residents live. The other issue I have is the no-stopping, or slowing. We don't block roads for those people up there. We pull to the side, so people can get around. We also, if we see somebody behind us, and we know that we're going to slow down, we will pull to the side and let those people go around us. They, again, pay money. You've promoted these horses. They want to be able to observe them, like everybody else out there. They want to be able to stop and take pictures. They don't want to have to take a picture from a rolling vehicle. You know, some of the restrictions are good, but if you keep tightening down, like some of this is, you're going to create bootlegging. People are going to find other ways to do it, whether it's from a different county, or some other method. So, I would hope you'd consider those two items to remove them. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard Brown.
Richard Brown, 251 Woodland Drive, Southern Shores. Pretty much, they just covered quite a lot of what I wanted to say, so I definitely agree with the previous people, what they said. As regards to the times, yeah, it's something I would like to see, maybe 7:00 AM to 7:30 PM, or maybe even just till dawn, somewhere around that. That way, it does change with the season, because obviously, even 7:00 in the off-season is going to be dark, so really, it should change with the season. I also like to discuss, obviously, the amount of vehicles, whether that would be four or five vehicles. I know the consensus that I've got is going to be five vehicles. I would maybe ask that you look at an overall reduction, maybe by percentage, instead of a set amount of vehicles, because it just seems like an arbitrary number to come up with, when you've got some companies that are running one, two, or three vehicles, and then others that are running more vehicles. It gives the other companies just more scope to get more vehicles, whereas reducing vehicles from the larger companies. Maybe it would be fair just to say, hey, an overall reduction of 20% must be imposed on the coming next year. That way, you know there's definitely a reduction of 20%. Obviously, if there's just one or two vehicles, then you say, and a minimum of two vehicles, something like that. Just maybe, maybe an idea. I did want to just quickly discuss the rental side of things. I know it's probably not something I'm going to really win. It's definitely something that you guys, I know it's hard, and you need to take care of. There's a lot of opposition against Jeep tours or rentals, and I can definitely understand that. Me personally, I always make sure to stick by the handshake agreement that we had with the county, and we always have just three tag vehicles, at most, behind each tour vehicle. Obviously, lessening the impact. I know that's still a nuisance to the residents, but people are going to still want to rent these Jeeps. I have actually two separate companies. I've got Wild Horse Adventure Tours, and Rick's Jeep Adventures. They are in the same building, but they are two separate entities. I market the two very differently. One markets towards people that want to see the horses, the other markets towards people that want to rent a Jeep. I would say, if I was had to get rid of all of my Jeeps, and just do, like, the cattle trucks, I could probably get 50% of those people that want to rent a Jeep, to go in a cattle truck. I could probably persuade them to do that, but I know the other 50%, they're going to be adamant. I mean, even right now, they'll say, we just want to rent a Jeep. We don't want to go with a guide. We don't want to have a guide in front of us. We just want to rent a Jeep, and just go out there and have fun. But every one of those, we managed to persuade and say, well, look, we're there, in case you break down, in case you get stuck. We talked them into going out with us, so that way, we're watching over them. We watch their speed, we make sure they don't do donuts, you know, we're making sure they don't go too close to the horses. So, we're actually really providing a service for those Jeep rentals. And I just want you to look at the alternatives of what will happen if you do get rid of the Jeep rentals. I can show you the statistics, I can show you the numbers on my website. I can show you how many people search for Jeep rentals. It's a lot of people. So, those people are still going to want to rent a Jeep. And if we can't talk them into it, they're going to keep demanding, okay, so where can we rent a Jeep from? And the only, you know, response is going to be, well, you're going to have to get to there and rent for the day. Someone's going to be watching this meeting, and be like, yeah, that's some good money to make down there, because you're still going to have that demand, and the supply's going to get cut. So, they are definitely going to, I would say, you know, move down south, and then you've got very little control over them, whereas right now, you've got a lot of control. We have to obey by the rules, especially with the new ordinance, where you can put even more controls over us. And at least then, you're controlling those Jeep rentals. And also factor in that, when I do a Jeep rental, I take five families out per day. So, for one Jeep, I rent that out five times per day, for one Jeep. So, I've got five Jeeps, so that's 25 families that I take out in five Jeeps. Now, if they can't go out with me, or, you know, other companies, then they're going to go down south. So, they're going to have to rent 25 Jeeps to replace my five Jeeps. There's no other way they can do that. There's no other way they can all go out and rent a Jeep. And I say, I can tell them all day long, well, why don't you just come out in one of our guided tours? And they're going to just turn around and say, I don't want to go on a guided tour. I want a Jeep rental. I want the experience of driving a Jeep on the beach. That's what I want, you know? And usually, it's the, well, not stereotypical, but the husband, you know, he doesn't really care much about the horses, the wife does, so he gets to drive the Jeep, she gets to see the wild horses. It's kind of a best-of-both world. But while we're doing that, we're all the time keeping an eye on them. I mean, I've even got an FM transmitter in each one of my tour vehicles, that broadcasts to the Jeeps following behind, so they have to listen to exactly what that tour driver says. So, all times, they're being held accountable. I've got GPS trackers in each one of my tour vehicles, so I know exactly how fast they're going, and exactly where they are at any point in time. So, we do have a lot of restrictions that I've put in myself, and obviously, with the new ordinance, it's, there's going to be a lot more restrictions, which is a good thing. And everything else, I definitely agree with.
Kind of wrap this up.
Sorry. I definitely agree with the taxes.
I'm bearing with you, but...
Okay, sorry. I definitely agree with all the taxes and all that good stuff. I think we should pay towards roads and public restrooms. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, just my point basically is to, you know, we've had work session after work session about these things, and haven't gotten anybody to come to them. And so, this is our effort to try to get the comments, so we understand what everybody's concerns are. But this still remains to be worked out. We're listening to the comments and questions everybody has, and, you know, we'll take those into consideration. Thank you. Nikki Hies.
Evening. Nick Hies, 772 Sunrise Court, Carrala, North Carolina. Basically, I ran out of things to say. Most everything's already been brought up. Mainly, I just have a question about the ordinance, it's the proposal that's being put in. It seems like it's only going to affect a few companies, in my opinion, the larger companies. We've had companies out there operating all summer long without a SUP. We're adding another company to the SUP, but trying to limit tours at the same time. I don't understand the concept of adding a tour company to the SUP, but limiting everybody else. It just seems like we're our tour companies being limited in order to add another tour company. We've increased business by 140% in the last two years. It's mainly due to the advertisements done by visitnc.com. We're actually advertised all through that website, Southern Living Magazine, London Times, Stacy Travels, Viva America. The list goes on, as far as where we're advertised through. Obviously, northeast is our main target. I also saw an email that was sent out to a lot of the North Beach residents. This email stated that they were at the last Monday meeting, talking about the nine companies. They're thinking it's going to be reduced down to 25 to 30. I did math on the four to five vehicles per tour company. If we're given nine SUPs, that adds up to 36 to 45, not 25 to 30. We're saying, right now, we have 46 vehicles. I'm in agreeance with lowering the tour companies down to a spot where we can stay the same, not grow any larger. I just think it's a sad shape that, right now, when I'm getting paid salary, I'm getting full health benefits from Rich, I'm getting profit sharing. I mean, he's taking care of me. I'm at a level 26-years-old, where I'm ready to start a family with this, and for him to be limited down to where he might not be able to have me anymore, because it's going to be a lot easier to run five trucks, and just send everybody out on a guided tour, than it would be to run everything that we are right now. Last four years, we've all worked really hard. We have over 20 employees. I'd say five of them live on North Beach. They drive down every day. We have one that comes from Knott's Island by boat, every day, to come to work, Monday to Friday. It's not like we're bringing in people from other counties. We're actually helping people in this county. Main thing, we're donating money. I mean, we're not hoarding all the money that Rich is making. We're making lots of money right now. He's just joined the Chamber of Commerce this year. He donated to the Carrala Schoolhouse, multiple different law enforcement and fire departments. $10,000 was donated in the last year to Wild Mustang Festival, which is benefit of the wild horses. The Currituck 5K they do every year in the Currituck Clubhouse, we donated money to that as well last year. We're one of their premier sponsors. American Forest, we planted 2,000 trees this year, for the American Forest Association, to lessen our carbon footprint. We've passed, in the past, we've actually tried to donate money to the roads to be fixed out there in Carova Beach. He donated $2,000. I'm pretty sure his mile marker, 21, I'm pretty sure that leads straight to the park, right there on the right-side road. That was filled in. It was stopped, because it was illegal to fix the roads without county permission. So, we have tried. We are very willing to help start the fire station in Swan Beach as well, as far as donations go. Obviously, with the reduction of the company, it might not be as much money as we would plan. The restrooms, I've brought toilet paper up to Betty before. We've tried everything. We want to upgrade the septic system there. I mean, anything we can do to help the park, because we use that more than anybody else, obviously. The only people you see there is the tour companies on that park. If all the tour companies get together, we actually upgrade the park, make it a little bit more usable for 20 people at a time, instead of two or three people at a time, which it is set up for right now. is set up for right now, that might help out a lot. I remember doing tours 10 years ago when that was all.
We're, we're pushing the three minute.
Okay. I'm all finished up.
Okay.
I'm all finished up. Thank you for listening, Tim.
All right, Nick. Thanks. Lynda Yerich.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Wild Horse.
Name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Lynda Yerich, 2146 San Piper Road, Corrova Beach. I'm the office manager for Wild Horse. And I'm not going to go into figures with you, but I want to tell you something about Richard. Richard has given me a job that I could get nowhere on the Outer Banks for the money I'm making, including the county, by the way, because I worked at the Corolla Visitor Center. One thing I want to say about that is working there, 95% of the people that came into the visitor center asked about the Wild Horse tours. And that's was before North Carolina made it the state horse. Um, and you may think I sell tours. I don't. I sell happiness. I've worked for rental companies where people come in screaming every day about this is broken, that's broken. I bet you in the three years I've worked for Richard, I've given back money four or five times from people being unhappy about the tours because they love it. They're very excited about the horses. Kids, I've taken out seven month old babies to 93 year old ladies. I've had people from Australia to Dubai this year. Getting to the Jeep rentals, my Jeep rentals are fully booked until Friday for this week already. And if Richard would sell his Jeeps to someone in Dare County, they could send those Jeeps up there unescorted just to go up. And I read in the newspaper article that you were going to try to stop that. Well, island cruisers, and I'm not sure where they're from, but they're.
Not to interrupt.
Oh, Salgo. They're on that beach every day I go home, almost every day, day. They're not only renting those little funny vehicles.
All kinds of stuff.
But they're running the SUVs now up there too. So it's not like you're taking away from these companies. Someone in Dare County is going to pick up the slack. I can guarantee you that. Cause the gentlemen want the Jeep, the Jeep tours. The women more want the history and it's a combination of both. Richard has tried so hard to work with the locals up there. Everybody, all the locals that call and complain have their, his personal cell phone number so that he can respond to them. He put those trackers in. I can go over to a screen on my, uh, computer, see how fast the vehicle was going and where they're located at. In return, what we get is people cursing out our guests, banning them from going into the restroom, actually getting out of their vehicles and chasing the horses away from our vehicles. And that is the truth. Um, we have four managers. All of us live in Currituck County. We have several employees that have been with Richard from day one. He is very, he has worked very hard to make what this company is worth today. Um, I think you should look at his two different companies and do an SUP for both of his companies rather than just one. Uh, in your ordinance, it says that, um, has to have the public parking, um, headquarters on private property. Yes, his, his companies are in one building, but he pays for two different suites in that building. Just like Mr. White has three different locations, we have two different locations, but they're in the same building, unfortunately. But you want to take away an SUP from him and give it to an organization that has been running tours all summer without an SUP. But the bottom line is whatever happens, people are going to drive out on the beach. If you cut back the number of our vehicles, several more tourists will resort to driving onto the beach unsupervised without proper knowledge or the etiquette and laws which could cause more harm than good in the grand scheme of things. The tour companies bring in a great deal of revenue to this county and provides good jobs for local Currituck community members. And that's all I have to say and I hope you think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Yerich. Okay. As I said at the beginning, I'd give anybody else an opportunity to speak to this matter, even if you did not sign up. So if there's anyone else that wants to extol the virtues of any of the tour operators or complain about any aspects, come forward and introduce yourself to us and let's hear what you have to say. But please limit it to three minutes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Wiley Melton. I live on Knott's Island, North Carolina. I've been working for Richard Brown for five years. I'm a carpenter by trade. You know how the economy is? Without him, I wouldn't have a job. Um, I've been doing these tours for five years, been driving the beach since the mid 60s. I've seen all the change on that beach. Your biggest problem on that beach, I'm going to tell you point blank, because I'll tell you from the heart, is litter and the day trippers that come in. You've got people coming on that beach every day that don't spend a damn in this county. Virginia tags, North Carolina tags, they come down there, they leave litter on the beach. Go down there with us and I'll show it to you. We got tents, canopies, sitting on the beach for months at a time and they complain about us doing tours. Everybody that lives over there came from another state to live here. They get here, they get territorial, they think we're the bad guys. We're keeping people under control out there. We're doing our job and it's time for y'all do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any horse tour?
How's it going, guys? Dylan Baker, 157 Owens Beach Road Extended, Harbinger. Um, I just want to say, uh, pretty much everything that's been said today is what's been on my mind for the past few weeks, you know? Uh, considering, you know, the prospect of us not having jobs anymore, obviously. I come from a family of tradesmen. Uh, I was out of work. I was unemployed coming out of college, couldn't find much going on in the economy. Rich has given me a job, an opportunity to work, um, pays us all fair wages. You know, it's a joy to wake up every morning and have that kind of security. You know, I've been, I've been out, I've watched my dad, who's 60 years old now, not able to retire. You know, he's out of work. I know there's four or five other people in the same position who work for this company. Um, it's something that we look forward to every year. And, you know, as a guide, I've worked for other companies. I'm the first person to tell you, there is a problem, okay? With the, you know, the tag thing with, you know, the handshake rule. If everybody adhered to that, there wouldn't be an issue. But you do have other companies out there running five, six vehicles in one big train. That is an issue. That fouls up everything. I've worked for those companies. I've led those tours. Okay? However, what we got going on at Wild Horse Adventure Tours, what I've seen from a lot of the other companies as well right now, this isn't the issue. Just like Wiley was saying, your biggest issue is on the people on the beach not knowing the rules. No one's educated out there. Us as guides, half our day we spend yelling at other people who are inside 50 feet because our people want to know why they can't get inside 50 feet. Because there's no education, there's no factor. When you go on that beach, there's no signs. You have tiny little blue signs up on the side of the road. That's all you got. If you guys want to really get to the root of it, sell a permit, something like that, where you sign the permit with your name that says, you know, I know the rules, regulations, I've read through it, I know what's going on. You guys make money through that. Like Wiley was saying, they're not spending a dime. They ship it all in, leave all the trash on the beach. Um, just want you to really consider what, what you guys have going here. And like you said, we would, we'd love for you guys to come up there and see, see it for your own eyes. It's not, we're not trying to pull the wool on you. I mean, if you came up there and saw it one day, you have a much better understanding of what's going on. So just want you guys to take that into account before you make any, you know, decisions on us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wes, you going to speak now or later?
No, I'm just listening. I was enjoying.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you want to say anything. I'll give you a chance to comment later if you.
No.
Karen didn't send you on a mission tonight?
No.
Okay.
You know, as the herd manager, I think it's my job to be more concerned about the horses. Um, the ordinance itself, it sounds like it's reasonable, so.
Come up where people can hear you.
Baited him in there.
Yeah.
I was stating that it's my job to manage horses.
Let me just make a note, this is Wes Stallings, the herd manager for the Corolla Wild Horse Fund.
So it's my job to manage horses. Uh, the ordinance does, um, it, it appears to be beneficial to the community. Um, I think that, uh, limiting the amount of traffic is, could be beneficial to the horses. So, um, I just enjoyed hearing what everybody was having to say about it. But if, if it does directly impact the horses at all, I think it would be the amount of traffic that we have. And, uh, I think that the ordinance addresses that and, uh, so I'm good. No, I just came to listen.
All right. Thanks, Wes.
Yeah.
I want to just address a couple of the points. Mr. Woody, you may want to explain the math. We learned all of it in the work session about the, uh, the limitations on parking and how it actually limits the number of vehicles as opposed to just numbers per tour company. But, um, if you can do the less than 13 slide version, that would be great.
Can do the less than 30 seconds version.
Okay.
Um, the number of vehicles is generally or has been based on the amount of, of available parking at each site. So if you had nine permits and you did it, the math, nine times four is 36. The problem is that each of those permits, they can't necessarily have four vehicles because they don't have adequate parking. So right now you have a total number of 46 vehicles that are permitted. Um, if you institute a four vehicle maximum, it's not a minimum, a maximum, and based on the parking constraints, you would have a total of 25 vehicles, not 34. Now if you increase that number of vehicles to five, that would take you up to 30 vehicles total.
Hope that explains where the numbers actually came from. It's not the number of vehicles times the number of permits, but the amount of available parking. You have to have a certain number of spaces for the people that you're touring. One of the things we're trying to address is specifically the number of vehicles touring at any one time. Our thought was if you put 15 people in one vehicle and only three in another, obviously would make more sense to use the larger vehicles because it cuts down the number and you're getting more tours. We don't have a perfect solution. That's why we're looking for answers from you folks. But hopefully this process will give us some input and a chance to come up with what will be the most workable solution. I think I can speak for all of us. We are certainly not interested in putting anybody out of business, out of work, or limiting private enterprise up there. We're just interested in protecting the asset that's so valuable to all of us and also some of the property rights, because we do get a fair amount of complaints from folks up there. Any other comments? Okay. Any other public comments from folks there in the audience? Okay, not hearing any? I'm going to ask if anybody, any other problems? Would you like to make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, please.
Gilbert, you have the floor.
I just wanted to publicly just, um, let everyone know, I had the opportunity to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners this past week, um, as a first time attendee, um, at the conference along with Mr. Etheridge. Um, but I just want to share the opportunity that I was given, um, while I was at this conference, I had an opportunity and honor to go into the chambers, um, and do a mock session, um, in the Senate and the House to debate some bills and things like that. But it was an honor and any time that I get an opportunity to embrace, um, knowledge and gain more skills and form relationships and gain resources with the North Carolina School of Government, um, I just want to thank the citizens of Currituck because your dollars were well spent with, uh, my attendance at this conference. You know, learning best practices from other commissioners and other county managers and city managers. Um, it was just an excellent opportunity for me and I just wanted to thank you all and let you know that it was an excellent experience. And I encourage and challenge my colleagues to attend more continuing education, um, so that we do learn more. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Gilbert. We appreciate you making the effort. All right. Okay, I will close the, uh, public comment period then, not having any other comments. We'll move on to public hearings. First one is public hearing in action on PB 12-14, Currituck County. Request update and adopt the zoning map to transition all properties in the county to the zoning districts identified in Unified Development Ordinance approved by the Board of Commissioners on April 2, 2012. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the, um, the new Unified Development Ordinance was adopted, as you mentioned, in April and it becomes effective January 1st, 2013. Currently we're in a period where the applicants can choose between the new and the old ordinance and we're having people choose both so far. So we're having, we are having folks voluntarily choose the new ordinance, which is a good thing. But the next step in this process is to adopt the new zoning map or to re-adopt the zoning map to reflect the new zoning districts. And tonight I'm happy to introduce Donna Valova, who is a senior, senior planner in the planning department. She's done a lot of the legwork on this, um, item and she's going to give you an overview of what it means to adopt the new zoning map.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, please? Going back to the horse tours, I think for the people that are here, can you give us an update on what our next move is? Are we going to have like, uh, are we going to vote on, on the next meeting? Um, I know we, this was what, a public hearing tonight?
No. It's a comment period.
Comment period, but we're not going to vote on anything tonight?
No, actually, I, tonight only.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they understood that they're not looking for.
Yeah, I think I complained that to you at the beginning, didn't I? That we weren't going to vote on it tonight. Okay.
I know. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
All right, Donna. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The official zoning map is being presented to you tonight as the next phase or next part of the Unified Development Ordinance process. In April, this board did approve the UDO and that established the new zoning districts as well as how the, the current districts will transition to those new districts. The ordinance also established the permissible uses as well as the dimensional standards, such as setbacks, lock coverage, densities. Uh, some of the uses did change so that they are now more appropriate for the zoning district in which they are located. Uh, the changes occurred through the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance and not a result of this remapping effort. The proposed zoning map, um, was prepared that transitions all properties in the county to the new districts. The one on the left illustrates the current base district map and the one on the right, uh, provides the proposed base district, um, zoning lines. The district transitions are basically categorized into two, um, processes. One is the, through a text amendment process and the other is through a rezoning process. A majority of the changes that are illustrated on the maps occur through the text amendment process where there's very little change, um, to particular properties. Those are like going from an agricultural district to another agricultural district or going from the R residential zoning district to the SFM district. The, uh, there are however, some changes to the map and those properties are, are basically being rezoned. And, uh, there's, there's no down zoning of property that's being proposed. There are, however, some changes to the map, and those properties are basically being rezoned. And there's no downzoning of property that's being proposed. Everything that is being provided basically increases your development, for the most part, increases your development potential, but no downzoning. Properties that are located either in districts that are being eliminated or new districts that are being established are those that are categorized in that rezoning effort. Properties located in Knott's Island, Gibbs Woods, areas that are currently zoned RR, which is the mixed residential zoning district, like Waterview Shores, Walnut Island, Sandy Point Resort, and other campgrounds are being rezoned to a new residential zoning district. Those uses and zoning allowances are almost unilateral in that case. There are also some changes where zoning districts are being eliminated. The RMF overlay will be eliminated and will be replaced with the MXR district, which is now going to be a base district. So the overlay will go away, and the base district will take its place. You also notice some changes on the Outer Banks. There were some red dots that appear on the left side of the map that don't appear on the right side of the map. Those properties are identified in plan unit developments on the Outer Banks. And as you know, the plan unit development is an overlay district, and what we've done with this map is provided the base district. So although on the surface, it looks like that they're not there, they are. They are illustrated on the overlay maps for the plan unit developments, and that's based off of the approved sketch plan. The big change, however, and properties that really aren't covered in the transition standards in the ordinance occurs in the Maple Barco area. Properties that are identified in the Maple Barco Small Area Plan as employment or mixed use are being considered for rezoning. Not all properties, but those properties that are either zoned RA or those properties that are owned by the county or the school system. Like the Maple Campus, the Community Park, Central Elementary School, and Ponderosa Mobile Home Park are identified in that Maple Barco plan as employment areas. So those properties have been illustrated either on their current zoning, which would be heavy manufacturing for the county's property. But we're also extending that general business zoning and down past the school and providing that on the Ponderosa property as well. There are properties located at the intersection of 158 and 168 in Barco that are currently zoned RA, and with that district being eliminated and that small area plan actually identifying that as a mixed-use area, we are proposing that that area be rezoned to MXR. Those are the major changes that are occurring with the map update. I do want to point out one more thing that we've provided in your packet. Through this process, we've identified some, an issue with an allowable use in a zoning district. And it has to do with the hotel-motel use that's currently allowed in the LBH zoning district. As we transition those uses over, that one was eliminated from the LB zoning. So we'd ask or recommend that the board amend the permitted uses table to include the hotel-motel in the LBH zoning district. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Ms. Valova?
I just, Mr. Chairman, would say the phone calls I've received concerning this was confusion just to make sure there was no downzoning. And I've told people there was no downzoning, and I figured some people would show up tonight to discuss it, but I don't see anybody. So maybe you guys did a real good job because I know that y'all have fielded several questions about that, so...
We have.
But I guess my question is, is in a full-service area, you would no longer have to go forward to get a rezoning, that underlying zone now exist?
No. Are you talking about the Maple Barco area specifically or in general?
Yeah, let's just say Moyoc, it's a full-service area. I thought one of our goals was that you wouldn't have to come back for a rezoning, that you'd be able to just go with the underlying allowances as that zone would be. Is that not so?
Not so. The land use plan, which you're referring to, which identifies properties in full service, limited service, rule, and conservation, that is our guide for reviewing rezoning applications. People still have the right to request rezonings. We tried to, in this remapping effort, to make as little change as possible. We will probably at a later date, once we evaluate the land use plan, possibly come forward with some changes after that. But this effort, we're trying to make as little change as possible.
That's all, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? Any questions? Mr. Woody? Go open the public hearing. Anybody have any questions, comments you wish to address from the floor related to this matter? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any further questions, discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval on this with the inclusion of the recommendation by the staff about motel and hotel changes.
And I'll second that motion.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, consideration and action PB 06-02, Freedom Forest, Phase Two. Request for preliminary plat extension of a six-lot residential subdivision located off Patriot Way in Barco. This an SVP?
It's extending an SVP, so I would think it would...
Okay, all right, I didn't have a note in effect. Well, in that case, gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You too, Mr. Gaither?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Consideration and action.
Okay. Consideration and action, okay. Well, I guess Mr. Woody's going to do that. You can sit down for right now. Evidently, it's not listed as a public hearing, it's just an extension of the...
It is an extension, and you're authorized to do that, and perhaps we didn't need to swear in, but I just think in my opinion, it's probably safe to go ahead and swear in when we do this extension. Real quickly, this subdivision was approved, given preliminary plat approval in May of 2008, which made it a vested subdivision. It's a six-lot residential subdivision, you can see on the map, off Patriot Way in Barco, which, to give some context, that is east of the airport, so it is in our airport area. It's in our airport overlay district, actually. The preliminary plat was due to expire in May of 2010. We give two years to get infrastructure put in. The General Assembly passed a law that suspended our vesting period, so this is probably the first of many more, I think, plats you'll see come ask for extensions over the next few months. But that extension by the General Assembly is now expiring, so many of these plats that were vested, their vesting is set to expire on January 1, 2013. Mr. Gaither here is here tonight on behalf of the owner to request an extension of that preliminary plat for an additional two-year period. If the board did grant the extension, that would allow this vesting to go from January 1, 2013 until January 1, 2015, which gives the developer more time to put in the required infrastructure to actually then vest the subdivision permanently. It is in the airport overlay, which, again, we're obviously trying to look for other types of uses in that area, but given the context of this, that it is an approved preliminary plat, staff does recommend approval of the extension. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, Mr. Woody?
I have no questions, but I'm going to make a motion to grant the extension.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would only comment that, as Mr. Woody said, we will have probably several of these to come before us, and by our vote on this, I think we will actually further that almost automatically because what we do today, for one, we will be, you know, doing for others as we come forward.
I concur with that, certainly with the economy being like it is.
Exactly.
Folks holding this property are in need of extensions. Any other question, discussion? All in favor, or I need a motion, or you've made a motion, you got a second?
Got a second.
Okay, all in favor. I need a vote now, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaither.
But I didn't get to say nothing.
Maybe that's a good thing.
For saving you.
No, I got to say one thing.
All right.
You know, I don't know this fellow, Richard, from the beach, but if he's what these people say he is, y'all need to hire him to do some marketing and give him a medal for employing people and paying them well.
I'm going out there and apply for a job.
I was going to say, I need his phone number. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, moving on to administrative reports. Item A, Mr. Steve Murray of the Albemarle Food Bank, proclamation for Hunger Action Month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hunger Action Month is a national effort put forth by Feeding America, which is National Food Bank Network. The point of Hunger Action Month is to raise awareness nationally of hunger in our communities. For northeast North Carolina, that means Food Bank of the Albemarle. We are based in Elizabeth City. However, we serve fifteen counties across northeast North Carolina, including Currituck County. In the fiscal year that just ended, we distributed over 124,000 pounds of food through five partner agencies here in the county. That works out to approximately 103,000 meals for people who otherwise would be unable to provide them for themselves. The stuff that we give folks is a means to get through from one paycheck that may not be able to make it through bills and groceries until they're getting paid again. A lot of our clients are working poor, and of the 5,000-plus households that visited our food pantries here in the county last year, 33% of those households had in them two of our most vulnerable populations, which are senior citizens and children. And things like Hunger Action Month, raising awareness about hunger in our communities, is very important to us because it gets the community involved, and if it weren't for volunteers at our food pantries here in each county, we couldn't do as much as we do. So this is just very important to our work, and we couldn't do what we do without the support of our communities. So thank you for having me here this evening.
Thank you for coming.
Do we need a motion to approve it, the resolution?
Proclamation, is there a resolution? I don't have a copy of one.
You've got a resolution, proclamation in your agenda package, and it would be appropriate for you all to go ahead and adopt that.
I'll move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, if I could comment? Thank you for the Food Bank of the Albemarle. The lower Currituck Food Pantry in Grandy serves between eight and 900 people a month, every month. And without these people, you know, they make it all happen, everything starts there. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one other comment. The Moyoc District now has a food bank, and Father Bill, excuse me, Pastor Bill at the United Methodist Church is leading that focus. So there is a food bank in the Moyoc area. I encourage you to contact them, and if you can bring food by, make donations, they would greatly appreciate that.
All right, moving on to item B. Tom Ley, Director of Public Utilities, Virginia Beach. Presentation on the dangers of uranium mining in Virginia to Currituck County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Thomas Leahy. I'm the Director of Public Utilities for the City of Virginia Beach. Public Utilities provides the water supply and wastewater collection for the city. I also have with me Ms. Angie Bezek. Ms. Bezek is a principal in the firm, Principal Advantage. It's a governmental affairs consulting firm under contract at Virginia Beach. I'll try to be brief. I assume you can see the slides. The first slide, it shows the Roanoke River Basin. It rises in Virginia, flows through John H. Carr Reservoir, through Gaston, through the Roanoke Rapids Reservoir, becomes the Lower Roanoke River, and then feeds into Western Arbemarle Sound. There's about 10,000 square miles of watershed in the Roanoke River Basin. It provides about half of the water that flows into Arbemarle Sound. About a third of the water comes from the Chawan River Basin, that's the Chawan River in North Carolina, the Blackwater, the Nottaway, and the Maheron in Virginia. And then the other sixth comes from the small watersheds that surround Arbemarle Sound. The pink line shows the pipeline, the Virginia Beach, constructed many years ago to Lake Gaston. So we're going to talk a little bit about, let's go to the next slide, please, talk a little bit about uranium mining in Virginia and why that's a concern. Uranium mining in Virginia, there are different ways to do it, but in Virginia, it involves excavating quite a large amount of rock, solid rock, that in the case of this one Virginia mine, either 25 to 100 million tons of rock. That rock is ground into sand and clay-like particles as fine as you can make it. It's then soaked in either an acid or an alkaline solution, in this case, an alkaline solution. And that will leach out about one-tenth of 1% of the ore, which represents about 15% of the radioactivity of the ore. That is uranium that is removed from the ore. The other 99.9% of this now-ground-up ore, with 85% of the radioactivity of the original ore, now has to be disposed of. Originally, it was solid rock, and it was buried, it wasn't going anywhere. Now, it's on the surface, it's small sand and clay-like particles. It has 85% of the original radioactivity, and it retains that for well over 300,000 years. So you have to do something because now air and water can move these, they're called tailings, air and water can move them. And in order to keep that from happening, you have to secure them in some very sophisticated landfills that may be above ground, dammed, sort of think of a dam and an impoundment, capped dam and impoundment above ground, or perhaps buried below ground. Go to the next slide, please. That's similar to the map I showed you when we started the presentation. That stripe of red properties that you see up in the headwaters of the Roanoke Basin, upstream of Carr Reservoir, are all the former mining leases where about 30 years ago, a company identified the potential for perhaps uranium mining. And you see a yellow dot in the center of that, and that is one actual ore body that has been confirmed to be economically mineable. As of today, that is the only spot that anyone has identified that is economically mineable because that ore body actually outcropped from the ground, and when they were driving around the county with Geiger counters, the Geiger counters went off pretty vigorously. Nobody knows at this point in time whether there are many more, whether or not all along that ridge of red properties, are there many more mines, whether or not they're economically mineable, nobody knows. But as you can see, if there were, if there was a large release of these tailings, it would move downstream into Carr Reservoir, into Gaston, eventually down into the Arbemarle Sound. Next slide, please. This slide came out of a USGS paper that said, that basically discussed where devastating stream flows occur and why do they happen. It's a map of the continental United States. You see a lot of small colored dots on the map, red going to blues and bluegreens and such. And all those small dots are places where the USGS, at some point in its history of measuring stream flow, recorded stream flows in the hundreds of cubic feet per second per square mile. What does that mean? Well, normal stream flow in this part of the country runs between about 1 and 10 cubic feet per second per square mile. So you're talking about where they've recorded flows that are 1 to 2 orders of magnitude more than normal. And they explain in the paper why that happens. That large concentration you see in the center of the country, in the Midwest, around the Mississippi Basin, is where cold air from Canada crashes with moist, warm air from the Gulf, and you get what they call tornado alley and Dixie alley, and that's what gives rise to those stream flows. You see another distinct concentration along the eastern ridge of the Appalachian chain, and that is where moisture from the Atlantic will stack up against the mountains of the Appalachian chain. The mountains will funnel the moisture up to the top of the atmosphere, and if you get the right meteorological conditions, it all comes out in what's called, in either devastating rainfall and even sometimes what we call probable maximum precipitation. And that's where all those black dots, the large black dots on the map, show you places where what we call a PMP storm or something close to a PMP storm have occurred. And not surprisingly, you see those dots in the same places that the USGS has recorded these devastating flows. And the final thing that that map shows you is the location of these proposed uranium mining, this proposed uranium mine and those former leases where there might be other mines. And you see this straight line that pretty much follows the Appalachian chain, and you see that those proposed mining is in the exact same location. And our concern is, all the mines that have been mined in the country to date have all been out in the West, and if you look in that map, out in the West, you don't see anything, and that's because there really is no source of moisture to provide the high flows and the devastating rainfall. So our concern is, there is a desire to mine in the place where you get devastating flows and perhaps from time to time even what we call PMP storms. If we go to the next slide, you'll see that these storms aren't all that infrequent. There's two locations in Virginia. One was 1969 in Nelson County, and that was a remnants of Hurricane Camille stacked up against the mountains and produced almost 30 inches of rainfall in six to eight hours. And another one in 1995 in Madison County. And then you can see the proposed, where the proposed mine is, and you can see that straight line again, just paralleling the eastern ridge of the Appalachian chain. And there happens to be one in North Carolina. That map was prepared for Virginia presentations, and I'll get it updated, but there, down a little bit off the corner of that map, there was one in North Carolina. So let's move, the next slide, please. The proposed mine has changed a little bit. Originally, they thought they were going to mine 100 million tons of ore, but they've backed off just a little bit. But we're still talking at this point about 25 million tons of ore that would generate 20 million cubic yards of tailings. So this is one mine, 20 million cubic yards. So what's 20, what's a million cubic yards? That's a landfill. Think of Mount Trashmore, if you've ever... Think of Mount Trashmore, if you've ever come in Virginia Beach on the expressway, and you saw a landfill. Well, think of a landfill, that landfill is 1 million cubic yards, although because of height requirements, a uranium tailings landfill would be twice the footprint and half the height. So think of just 1 million cubic yard tailings impoundment of about 40 acres being about twice the footprint of Mount Trashmore. Now, the mining company proposes to deep shaft mine this ore, and they can put about 40% of the ore of the ground-up tailings back into the mine shafts. They mix it with some cement. There's some question as to whether or not the regulators will let them do that, but let's say that they do that. There's still 12 million cubic yards from this one mine that's going to end up in about six to eight surface tailing impoundments, basically either below ground or underground. And that's what our concern is. So go to the next slide, please. The National Academy of Sciences, under contract to the state of Virginia, did prepare a report for the Commonwealth of Virginia to guide them on whether or not the Commonwealth should allow uranium mining in Virginia. That report is available on the websites. I'll send you some sites. There is a 20-page, non-technical version, which I would highly recommend reading. I'm not sure you want to plow through the 300-page report. But anyway, the National Academy of Sciences did indicate that the climate in Virginia, that Virginia had the potential for extreme events, that uranium mining had the potential for some significant environmental effects. And they particularly talked about tailings disposal cells, and whether or not Virginia's climate was maybe too severe for those cells. They made recommendations, next slide, please, made recommendations as to what type of regulatory framework ought to exist in Virginia if the state was going to do this. They were quite blunt that Virginia had no experience with uranium mining. They even indicated that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, which would be the federal regulator involved in this, had no experience with uranium mining in this kind of climate, that all of their experience had been in the West. They said that there were very steep hurdles for Virginia to overcome, and that there were large gaps in the regulatory environment. So that concerned Virginia Beach quite a bit, and Virginia Beach has prepared a model to assess what might happen if, in spite of all the best-laid plans of the regulators, that something happened, such as a catastrophic rainfall event, that might rupture an above-ground tailings impoundment and wash a lot of these tailings downstream. An example might be, you may recall about two or three years ago, that there was a coal ash impoundment in Tennessee, and they had some issues, some freezing, and some mismanagement of the water, and more rain than they expected, and that dam liquefied, and it broke, and it sent 5 million to 6 million cubic yards of coal ash downstream. We're modeling a scenario of only about 700,000 cubic yards, less than 1 million cubic yards, that might come downstream from a catastrophic storm. So we did this study. It's a computer simulation of what would happen. It was prepared by Michael Baker Engineers. They do, they've been doing the floodplain modeling for FEMA for about three decades, and they teamed up with the University of Mississippi that does the sediment transport modeling for the Mississippi River for the Department of Agriculture. We won't spend any more time talking about it, it's very technical, but let's go to the next slide. The mining company that wants to mine did criticize the model. I'm not going to get, I could spend an hour and bore you to death on that, but I won't. What I'll do say is, they did raise one valid question, and that is, if you bury all of these tailings, consider, think of a landfill can be either above ground, like Mount Trashmore, or think about turning it upside down, digging a big hole in the ground, and putting it underground. If all these tailings are buried underground, the likelihood that they'd be released downstream is much less significant. And the company has said that that would be, its plan would be, to put all these tailings below ground. However, the National Academy of Sciences listened to that argument from the company, and they specifically rejected it. I don't think I have it in this presentation, but in your handouts, which have more slides than I'm going to go through tonight, there's an actual quote from the National Academy of Sciences where they specifically rejected the thought that you could assume automatically these tailings would go below grade, because they pointed out that out in Colorado, where they just licensed a mine, the first uranium mine to be licensed in 30 years, all the technical arguments said that the tailings should be below grade, but for economic reasons, they allowed the company to put the tailings above grade and store them above grade. We also point out that 30 years ago, the company that did want to mine, wanted to mine the Coles Hill Mine at that time, concluded the groundwater levels were unacceptable for below-grade tailings. And finally, the USGS presentations to the National Academy of Sciences said that they didn't have a lot of groundwater data out there, but what they did have suggested the groundwater was very shallow and very mobile, which didn't really support the argument that the tailings would be below grade. So anyway, let's go to the next slide, please. This model doesn't actually say exactly what's going to happen to cause an above-grade impoundment to fail. It is assumed that it's some type of catastrophic precipitation event that intersects with maybe human error. Think about the Deepwater Horizon rig that failed, that exploded and burned and released all the oil a couple of years ago. The model doesn't try to say what set of natural and man-made things came together to cause that to happen. It just tries to say, if it does happen, what would be the results. I do want to stress, this is a worst-case scenario. It's not supposed to happen. If everything works right, and the regulators do their job, and the company does their job, and the designs and all of that work out right, this is not supposed to happen, even if a catastrophic storm hits. However, I'm not going to bore you, but I could run through quite a bit of time telling you all the places in the world and in the country where some of these things have happened, notwithstanding the fact that they weren't supposed to happen. I will say, because of this model, we're pretty confident that the normal emissions from the mine, the normal air emissions that it will have, and the normal water discharges that it will have under the Clean Air and Clean Water Act, those will be, may be significant to people who live around the mine, but we don't believe that with all the water and all the distance downstream, that would be detectable. What our model says is, if you have a catastrophe, I'm going to show you those results, what would happen if there was a catastrophe. So we can, why don't we skip the next slide, which is just a list of model assumptions you can look at, and go straight to the results. The first one will be Carr Reservoir. The proposed mine is about 50 miles upstream of Carr Reservoir. The red, this is tracking in the aftermath of a catastrophe. The red is radium at about four times the Safe Drinking Water Act and Clean Water Act levels. The colors you see that are green, that's about 10 pico currys per liter, which is about twice the Safe Drinking Water Act and Clean Water Act levels, which happen to be about five. Background concentration is the dark blue. This simulation runs for two years. It's a 700-day simulation, although it's only going to take a minute and a half today. And you can see that eventually, the water column does clear. As you, as the water flushes down, the tailings flush down, the radium, this one happens to be radium, it moves through the reservoir into Lake Gaston. One thing you see is that the tributaries tend to stay clear, because there's nothing to force them up there, until Carr Reservoir, which operates for flood control, actually goes through a flood control cycle. And so if you see that big tributary down at the southeast corner of Carr, you see the flood control operation actually pushing some of the tailings up into that tributary. But as a general rule, after about two years, and this was a drought scenario, in a wet year, in the wet scenario, where we assume that two wet years followed the catastrophe, it cleared up in a matter of months. But in the dry year scenario, it takes about two years to move through. And Carr Reservoir makes up, the outflow from Carr Reservoir is right into Lake Gaston, and it's 93% of all Gaston's inflow. So you can see what happens at Carr Dam, doesn't stay at Carr Dam, it actually goes to Gaston. And so this is the same two-year scenario in Lake Gaston. One big difference, though, Gaston is not operated for flood control, so as a result, you will see very, very little intrusion into the tributaries. Now, the city's project is on that big tributary to the north, at the northeast corner of Lake Gaston, about halfway between the lake and the top of that tributary. And what this model has told us is, is that if a catastrophe happens, we'll probably have to turn our project off. We do not have NPDS permits or Clean Water Act permits to move contaminants from Lake Gaston into water bodies in the southeast Virginia, and that's where that project discharges. It doesn't discharge into a treatment plant, discharges into a waterway that flows into a drinking water reservoir. So we'd probably have to shut our project down for a couple of, in the aftermath of a drought, for a couple of years. But, so what would that mean to, let's go through, let's skip through the next two slides, which just described what would happen, and stop there. What you saw in those two videos only represented about 10 or 20% of the radioactivity. Mostly, it was radium, which tends to be soluble, so it goes to the water column, and it moves with the water column. About 80 to 90% of the tailings are not soluble, and they end up settling out in rivers and reservoirs. And you can see that radioactivity that remains in the reservoirs because of settling is a much longer-term issue. While the water column will clear, these radioactive sediments would be on the bottom of these reservoirs forever, until they were dredged up. And as you can see, they're quite high numbers. We, that's not necessarily a water supply issue, but it's probably certainly a long-term environmental issue. So if we go to the next slide, please. Go back to my first map, which is looking at the Roanoke River Basin. We have not yet modeled Lake, the Roanoke River, but I can tell you from a lot of experience I've had, because I was the Lake Gaston project manager, I fought all of those environmental battles, we did model the transport of water all the way through. Takes about two weeks for water from Gaston to move through that small reservoir that's at the base of Gaston Dam, it's called Roanoke Rapids Reservoir. It'll take about three to four weeks to move down the Roanoke River. As I indicated, the Roanoke River, on the average, provides half of Arbemarle Sound's water. So what you would expect to see is about four to six weeks after it leaves Lake Gaston, you could expect to see that water hitting Arbemarle Sound with some dilution from the lower Roanoke River watershed, and some dilution from the Chawan River watershed. If it's in the middle of a wet period, that dilution would be substantial. If it was in the middle of a dry period, there wouldn't be that much dilution. The detention time, or how long it takes water from the combined watershed of the Chawan and the Roanoke River to move through Arbemarle Sound, is about, is on the order of several months in a wet period, and on the order of a year or two in a very dry period. So what you'd expect to see if we were to model it, would be those contaminants moving through, moving down the river, moving through Arbemarle Sound, eventually, those in the water column making its way through, past Manio into the, towards Oregon Inlet, where it would combine with water from Pemblico, and a lot of it would eventually leave Pemblico, leave through Oregon Inlet. But along the way, it would deposit a lot of water, a lot of the contaminants into the bottom of Arbemarle Sound. But again, we have not modeled it. I can't tell you how much it will be. I can tell you it'll be less than Gaston, and less than Carr, because Carr traps a lot, and Gaston traps a lot, and then finally, the Arbemarle Sound would trap a lot. But once there, it would be a long-term environmental issue. Finally, though, I'll remind you once more that this is a worst-case scenario. It's not supposed to happen. So I don't want anybody to go home thinking that if they have a uranium mine up in Virginia, this is automatically going to happen. However, the chances of it happening are very small, but the consequences are very great, and that's what concerns Virginia Beach. So I do want to thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
What specific interest did you have as far as Currituck County making some stand or comment on this issue? I mean, obviously, the Commonwealth is not going to do anything we ask them to do, so...
Well, one, I wanted to come down just to educate you. I've had a lot of requests all across, from a lot of jurisdictions in North Carolina, to come down and educate you. In the case of Currituck Sound, you would not expect to see any of this migrate far up into the sound, but certainly where Currituck and Arbemarle Sound come together, wind tides dominate really water flow in the sound there. So there would be some mixing and impact there. Really, I was here to try to explain to you our concerns, and if you share those concerns, I'd be glad to work with your staff. I didn't have, I don't have a specific request to take any action. I know a lot of, a lot of the jurisdictions are taking action. They're passing resolutions of concern, or resolution in opposition to the mining. At this minute, you cannot mine for uranium in Virginia, but there are efforts underway to have the state change that, perhaps as early as the 2013 General Assembly.
Any questions or comments?
I'd only like to say that I have followed this issue for the past, I guess, two and a half years on the first race. And coming from a mining background, and having been a coal miner, the, when you start taking things out of the earth, water flows into mines, and you're talking deep mining. And that water goes through the fractures in the rock and in the lower levels, and the underground streams that we tap our wells from could be, you know, over the years, you might see, you know, some drift of those tailings in the aftermath of it. And like I said, I was there when the coal tailing dam broke loose in West Virginia, and 123 people were killed. And that was never supposed to happen. So as a concerned citizen, and as an avid fisherman, I fish Peahill, and I fish a water intake quite a bit. I would urge the other commissioners here to take a real strong stand against this because of the adverse effects that it could have in the future on the Albemarle Sound, and all of us eventually.
Anything else? Thank you very much for coming down here. It's very informative.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. I too have a lot of history in the western part of Virginia, up there, the Roanoke area. I grew up in Lynchburg, and played Smith Mountain Lake, Leesville Lake. Have some good friends up there, who are all Sierra Club members in Roanoke, that have been complaining about this ever since it saw the light of day. So I think we probably had a lot of information already filtered our way regarding the issues related to it, and many of the other things, like fracking, which is a big thing that's becoming a concern down here. So we will certainly take this into consideration. Thank you. Okay, that's all the administrative reports. We'll move on to old business. First item, A, Approval of Ordinance Amendment on Unattended Property on the Beach, Second Reading.
So moved.
Zach Blackett?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm going to make a motion that I sent out last weekend, or last week to each one of you, two amendments to add to this ordinance. One would spell out how a task force would be developed to consider future changes to the ordinance, because we know it's going to have to be changed. And the second thing, let me make sure I got myself right here, was to allow a carve-out, opt-out provision for those PUDs, or POAs, or HOAs that has capability and the financial ability to police their own selves, and allow this type of opt-out upon a plan they would submit that this board would approve. I'm making that in form of a motion, that we add that language to what we just adopted.
Is that something that we can tweak over the winter months?
Better do it now.
Well, from a standpoint of discussion, and listening to it, it makes sense to me, but I'd like to hear more about how it's going to work. I'm a little apprehensive about bringing more and more parties into it. I'm not a big favor of ruling by committee. I guess that's my issue.
I'm not asking that this committee have the authority. I'm saying this is an advisory board that would look at any possible...
I'm saying this is an advisory board that would look at any possible amendments that have come down the road and, and then give advice and counsel to this board. So that we can ensure that the welfare of that beach is being looked at as, in a fair and balanced approach that it can be done.
And I understand the logic of that. It's just, my concern again is the makeup of the committee, the parties that get involved in that. So I don't know if anybody else has...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second it so we can discuss it.
All right, go ahead and we'll...
One thing that I absolutely want to see happen as well is, and I'll, and I'll use Corolla Light as an example. They see this as an opportunity for them to kind of step up to the plate and offer a higher level of amenities to the people that are vacationing in Corolla Light. So they rent beach chairs, they do several other things, and they've kind of taken the bull bond of horns and cleaned their beaches up. And I think that there may be some interest in some of the other beaches, some of the other PUDs areas, in doing the same thing. And I certainly do not want to limit their abilities to make the vacation experience better if that, if that's what they want to do. It seems like we spend a lot of time as commissioners looking at ordinances that say you can't do this, or you can't do that. And after a while, the beach is going to become unattractive if we do not allow people to do things on the beach. And I think the PUDs, the Property Owner Association should determine what they want to allow on their beaches, and it allows them an opportunity to rent the chairs, to do different things, and maybe make some money to offset some of their homeowner's dues and, and other things. So I absolutely do want to see that authority allowed to anyone that chooses to do that. And if they don't want to do it, nobody's forcing them.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. With us passing this ordinance tonight, and I'll ask Mr. McCree, does this block any PUD from having the same capability as Corolla Light to do, to move forward with anything? Does this, does this ordinance prevent future...
I think we're talking about two, two different issues. I mean, there's one part of this which has a zoning aspect to it with regard to the use of property and whether, for example, commercial activity is allowed on the county's beaches and to what extent. I mean, I think the planning department has for years now given an interpretation of that ordinance that allows for those PUDs, for example, that have a beach club component to provide for this kind of amenity, I think that the Commissioner O'Neill was just speaking about. This ordinance that you just adopted does not preclude that, I do not believe, but what it does do is prohibit the leaving of personal property of any kind, except is accepted by the ordinance, on the beach within, during, during certain hours.
So Mr. O'Neill's concerns would be, it's not a concern. He would, the PUD would be able to do what Corolla Light is doing, is that what you're saying, Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't limit the abilities of the associations to improve the vacation experience for people that go on the beach.
I want to say this once again, I've said it many times. I don't want to leave anything for interpretation by future staff. I'm not saying that they won't make a good interpretation, but we see so many regulations across this country that was left for interpretation. The Act was just a few words, but then it's been just blown all out of proportion. I don't think anybody sitting up here can tell Corolla Light or the Currituck...
Currituck Club.
Currituck Club or anybody else that might have some beach area, Pine Island, what is best for the people that's vacationing there and paying dollars to rent and stay there. We should make sure that that POA or HOA, or however you want to call it, can design a shoe that fits the foot of their resort to the people that are staying there, not we dictate from this table up here what can and cannot go on up there.
I think my concern is if, if it's like having a business, you have, this is my market, this is what it is, and if, and as long as Corolla Light and Currituck Club and whoever else is following the same set of rules, if we take those same set of rules and apply them to Ocean Sands or Pine Island or whatever, it's still the same shoe, if I'm, unless I'm confused.
Well, this situation essentially, and I think Mr. Etheridge made a good point in that we want to allow input about issues that we may not have considered and certainly make sure that we're not arbitrary in interpretation or enforcement of those. But this is a very minimalist ordinance. The idea is we were asked to address one specific public safety issue, which is equipment which could become dangerous being left on the beach. And under those circumstances dictated in the ordinance, we have the ability to remove it, which we did not have before. That was the shortcoming in the ordinance prior, that although we could complain about it, we really had no means of actually removing it.
Well, I think what elevated it to a new level was a presentation was done from Duck in Corolla. And at our last meeting, some of the folks from Corolla were talking about adding a whole lot of other stuff to this. I mean, there was a, I think one of the suggestions was that you could only dig a hole, a certain roundness and a certain depth and different things like that. And I don't want us to, to sit up here and all of a sudden, we've got another ordinance that's this long saying what you can't do.
But I think this is a starting point on the tents. And I think over the winter months, and I think Corolla, Ms. Marzetti said, this is a starting point. We realize it's just a topic of discussion. And I think that's my reason for voting yes, is let's get it going, let's get it going. We know we're going to tweak it, everything, everybody agrees that between now and the winter months, there's going to be some additions and deletions to it, but it's a starting point.
I don't disagree. But based on my experience being around government a long time, this thing will get blown completely out of proportion if you don't set the guidelines now in the initial beginning on how things will be amended or changed in this ordinance and who's going to do it.
My, my experience for being here the few years that I have is that the input of advisory boards does not necessarily significantly affect the actions of this board.
I just think it gives another opportunity for full disclosure and sunshine and gets as many people involved into it so that when this board, whoever might be sitting up here makes the decision, they've got all the information and leaves no stone unturned. We see it with the horse ordinance tonight, because nobody's shown up. Now, tonight, they came.
Might I make a suggestion, Mr. Etheridge? Make this as what your suggestion is, as an agenda item at the next meeting specifically, so we know what we're specifically voting for. And tonight, because I'm not sure exactly what the makeup of the board is you're proposing, I know you sent something out, I don't have it in front of me, but withdraw your motion tonight, and I'll withdraw my second, and then we can...
I will amend it to put it on the next agenda item.
But we still pass the ordinance tonight dealing with...
Oh, yeah, that's done.
Okay, I, you know, this horse is...
No, no, that's done. This is just something going forward.
And what I suggested was eight members, so that whatever it takes, recommendation comes from this board, that will have to have been pretty much approved by a good majority. It just can't be a four to three if it's a seven-member board. And we spelled it out in terms of, of the POA, the Concerned Citizens of Corolla, we get a, Corolla Concerned Citizens, we get a representative, lifeguards, law enforcement, and property managers. That's the ones that's out there making the investment, and they should have input into what's going to affect their investments.
Do you think we would get a consensus with all these people coming together? We'd get a consensus?
They've got to make their points.
Okay, I'm just saying...
It won't be any willy-nilly recommendations coming forward if they, and that's why you're making an eight-member board. And I was at the meeting with Ms. Gilbert this past week and talked to, there are several boards of commissioners in North Carolina, Roberson County, Prequemans, that have even number of boards. So people that propose things have to make their arguments and have good valid points in order to succeed at getting them passed. It's just not a four-three majority.
Well, I would like to see further explanation of the makeup of the board, and I'd like it, if it's going to be an advisory board, I think it needs to be consistent with the makeup of our other advisory boards, because we have some guidelines as to who can comprise those boards. So I think really, I just said, I just didn't think I had enough information to entertain that tonight.
That's fine. I threw it out there to think about it.
So I'll suggest again that we withdraw and put it on the next agenda, and that gives two weeks or three weeks to work through whatever it is and ask questions and have a better understanding, then it go up or down vote.
Is that the motion then?
I'm, I'm confused. Did we pass the ordinance tonight by a majority vote?
The ordinance is passed.
Okay, what are we withdrawing then?
This is an amendment, or actually a chance for a meeting to amend that, have it on the next agenda in the lines of the day.
It passed unanimously tonight.
What he's, what his amendment, his ordinance, his motion is to appoint an advisory committee to make further recommendations on the beach and to allow the PUDs the opt-out option, which Mr. McCree has said isn't necessary because they already have it. So this is something entirely, we pass that, it's, it's done. It's in stone.
I'm just confused that we have to do it in two weeks or three or whatever.
This is to consider the amendments I've put forward.
As a separate, as a separate issue than what we just passed.
It's tough when you get old.
You got it, buddy. You got it.
All right, we've got motion and a second, no further discussion on it? All in favor?
I thought he went through it.
A made of subsequent motion that we put it on the next agenda, is my understanding.
Next meeting.
Yeah. Is that your understanding, Mr. Keen? You're keeping track of that? Okay.
It's on first base.
Yeah.
What's on second?
All in favor of Mr. Etheridge's motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll see it on the next agenda then.
Thank you.
New business. An ordinance, the Currituck Board of Commissioners amending the code of ordinances to regulate outdoor tour.
That's why I asked my question earlier about if, if it was on the agenda, we were going to vote on it. That's why I asked.
And are we voting on it, or is we just discussing it? We're just discussing it, is my understanding.
I believe it was on your agenda for possible action, but as, I think you've indicated to those that were in attendance tonight that that was not your, your inclination. So I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I want to move, we continue just to the next meeting.
Second?
Okay. Well, a little discussion in here, because my understanding was when we had the last discussion of it, is that we would throw it out there to get input from them, then we would go back and have some work session discussion about how the ordinance actually would be constructed. I don't know that we've done that. Do we, we want to do that in an open session, or we want to have a work session about it?
Well, we got to have something, some, some items that are listed of what we heard tonight in comparison to what's already there.
I was going to say, I would certainly like some guidance if it's your desire to...
Just summarize everything.
To amend this ordinance again.
Put that in there. Well, that's kind of it, because we, we don't know really. My input was that if we saw how many permit applications were going to come forward, that might change your mind as to how many permits we were going to issue. And the same thing, you know, the vehicles, I think we've got that worked out, but the, the Jeeps are going to remain an issue, but, you know...
Let me, let me just touch real quick, and for the public's benefit as well. You heard a couple of the same comments. First of all, it is indeed, as proposed in the ordinance, five vehicles. Secondly, with regard to not stopping on roads, there is a provision, as you recall in the ordinance, that prohibits these, these tour vehicles from stopping in the middle of the road. And that was to address concerns expressed by persons that lived and visited in that area up there. With regard to the route clause, there is a provision in the ordinance that allows for, does not mandate, but does allow for the commissioners to adopt, if you find it necessary now or sometime in the future, to adopt a route plan to make sure that certain areas within the northern beach are not perhaps overrun by these tours. I would note that if, if it is your intention to respond to the concern about the route clause, that, that we would want to amend or modify eight dash ninety-seven, that section, to remove a provision that says there should only be five licensed vehicles that shall, shall run on a route. It's makes, appears to make it mandatory. So if you want to keep it as a permissive provision, the possibility that the commissioners in the future could establish routes but not require to do so, I would suggest removing at least that language that makes it appear to be mandatory in another section of the ordinance. And then I guess the, the other issue seemed to be...
Hours.
The hours. And that's, that's just up to the commissioners. You may recall that the ordinance restricts the hours west of the dune. That was again in response to the community and, and residents up there who wanted to try to, I guess, have some more quiet time in the morning and later in the evening. It does not prohibit them, the, the, the outdoor tours from being on the oceanfront, on the beach, but it does, the hours do restrict their operation on the west side of the dune.
And the proposal does limit the absolute number of permits.
That's correct. Right now, it's, it would only allow for nine licenses.
I also have another issue, Mr. Chairman. You had, I believe, Mr. Brown brought forward that he operates two businesses. Is he going to be allowed to have five for each business, or is he going to have five period? And I think Bob White operates, was it three? So how is that going to be handled?
It, it runs by license, so each licensee will be allowed to have a maximum of five vehicles.
So Mr. Brown will be allowed to have five with this one and five with his other?
If, if each company is granted a license, yes.
Mr. Brown is part of two, two of the nine are his.
Well, we get into the...
That's why I suggested...
The legal definition of a corporation, but each is deemed to be a separate entity.
A work session and use what I talked about at our last work session, that we limit the vehicles and let the operators that apply for it first come, first served.
Are you suggesting we have another work session in two weeks?
Well, we're going to have to.
Okay, well, I mean...
If we're going to consider everything that could be laid out.
Yeah, there are a lot of unsettled options in here that Mr. McCree needs some guidance on, and I think we need a work session in order to narrow down that and perhaps have another public discussion in order to see whether that flies.
I think there's two things the board needs to stay focused on. Number one is why are we doing this? Okay, and the first reason is because the people in Corrova have these horse tours and they're all over the place, okay? That's the first reason, first thing. The second thing we need to consider is these are viable businesses that feed families and keep people employed, and the Board of Commissioners do not need to be the pickers of winners and losers, as some of our friends north of us do. That's not our job. Our job is to, number one, make sure that we're addressing the issues, and number two, not to pick the winners and losers as to who stays in business and who doesn't.
And I agree completely with that.
Also in the number of businesses?
I agree with that, and I consider too the fact that the argument made for the types of vehicles, I think, was worthy of consideration, even though we are trying to limit the smaller vehicles, because we feel like they are the most nuisance factor, but there are, there is a demand for them. That's satisfying a segment of the market.
But we still can't get away from the reason that we're here is because of the abuses that have gone on with some of the operators. And, and they even said themselves, there are some that are abusing the resources and so forth. And unfortunately, the way government works is when you take care of that one that's abusing, the innocent get punished as well. So we need to be cognizant of what we do and the effect that it has on those people that are working and feeding their family and...
Mr. Chairman, have we established an amount on, like a franchise fee? Have we established an amount yet?
We have not.
That, that would be something that would be adopted separate as an amendment to your fee schedule.
Keep, keep in mind, you heard also tonight, you got people coming out of Derrick County. They said as far away as Salvo that are coming up there. So we don't want to create a situation where we drive this thing in a black market type of deal.
That's been one of our concerns all along too, but I think that may become economically unviable when you consider the amount of distance and traffic. I certainly wouldn't drive from Salvo up here on Saturday during the season. But, you know, it may be, I think Commissioner Martin has pointed out many times, our significant issues tend to fall on about 15 days out of the year, traffic... on about 15 days out of the year, traffic-wise.
And let us remember, the primary thing, the tours are serving the, our visitors...
Amenities.
And it is absolutely, that, what they're doing is really providing, you know, an outlet to our visitors, and that's what we want. That's what we need to keep them happy and keep them coming back.
In that terms, provides jobs.
Well, we also have to remember the amenities that are up there, and it's stressed out now, because I think, Mr. Scanlon, how often are we having to pump out the restrooms up there?
Monthly.
Okay, I mean, at some point in time, you, you know, I realize free enterprise is good, but, I mean, we only have so many resources.
But we also heard from the, all the people here, that they would pay to expand and/or cover the cost of what the county is burdened with right now. And we might look at that also.
The reason they can't take care of themselves up there is because we don't allow them to take care of themselves up there on the north beach.
All right, we have a motion to have a work session, agenda. What are we going with this?
Yes.
Well, I made a motion to continue it to the next meeting, but I'll say continue it to a work session.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, if you'll schedule a work session for us, Mr. Scanlon, or Ms. Keen, whoever wants to get the stuff together for that. Okay, board appointments, appointment to the Board of Adjustment, I think it's...
Mike Painter. He's coming off the Economic Development, and I talked to him. And so, he does want to be on the Board of Adjustments.
Motion?
Good, good choice.
We want to do them both together. Ms. Gilbert has one.
Painter, Bank, Payment.
Painter.
Yeah, because we got them confused last week.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Painter on the Board of Adjustment.
I'll second Paul, Mr. Morton's motion.
Okay, yeah, it was a motion then, okay, nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Gilbert, we added you as B2.
Yes, I'd like to make an appointment to the Economic Development Board. I'd like to nominate Rose Thompson from Oxford Road in Moayok.
And that's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that. Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, minus budget amendments, number three.
Approved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commission report, start with Mr. Etheridge.
I know I'm going to be the first of many. Vance, we miss you, buddy. Godspeed, thoughts and prayers.
Ms. Gilbert?
I want to reiterate that, thoughts and prayers, and to Vance, his family, and to Smokey. I have to reach out to him, too. Vance's son. The other thing is, is we have 78 days.
Explain that.
Smokey is Vance's beloved dog, who he treats like his child.
A lot of people do.
I just want to say that we have about 78 days to the next election, and it's important that each one of us do our due diligence and research the candidates that you're going to vote for, make, form your own opinion, but get to know these candidates from the federal, all the way down to our local candidates. I just want to reiterate that, because I get phone calls constantly of my thoughts and ideas, but I want each one of you all to take that into consideration and do your due diligence. You've got time to do that.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, I want everyone to be aware that next Monday morning, school starts. You'll have an additional 1,500 to 2,000 vehicles traveling the county's roads. You've got a lot of high school students that are going to be driving, probably about 500 of them. So, please be aware of that, and be conscious of those kids waiting for buses. And please look out for the buses and cells, because they're just starting back. Everybody's a little rusty, so let's all be aware of it.
Mr. Etheridge?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. O'Neill?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for, sometime in a future meeting, for Mr. Woody to give a report to the public about the reorganization of the planning and zoning departments. I think he's made some, some good changes, and has some ideas about cutting the amount of time to get applications, permits, and so forth. So, I think he needs to inform the public. And then, the last thing that I have is, there's been a horrible amount of accidents down in Lower Currytuck. I'm sure you're, I've seen some emails from you as well with the road resurfacing. And I was wondering if anyone on staff could tell us when they're supposed to put the final, it's my understanding, that is not the final surface. They're supposed to put another layer that won't be quite as slick, and if anyone knew when that would happen.
You are correct that it's not the final surface, but I do not know the date of when they're supposed to put the new surface down. I can find that for you.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. It has been some significant challenges driving down there. And I also want to send my best wishes on to Vance, and keeping him in touch, thanks to Ms. Gilbert and all of his friends up in Carova and Notts Island, who are constantly calling me to find out what's going on. I just wanted to mention that we had a nice public notice today from Rhino Edwards about the improvements at the Rural Center. The boardwalk's been put in, the launching ramp down there for the kayaks and so on. It's a beautiful facility. There's some pictures. I posted them on Facebook today, a link to that album for it. So, go on and take a look and see. And I think probably it's available on the county website, too, a link to that. Take a look at them. If you haven't been down there, you should go. Shame on you, because it's a beautiful facility, and you certainly ought to make use of it. And that's all I have tonight. Mr. Scanlon, you were going to...
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I would like to add one thing I forgot. It's been printed in the newspaper stories about the situation with the Mid-County Bridge. And I urge anybody within the sound of my voice, or whatever they might read, to please write the four leaders of the Joint Transportation Oversight Committee. They're meeting on September the 7th, and I had conversations when I was in Raleigh last week, and the bridge, we need to support and help the bridge all we can.
You know, I think I'd like to elaborate on that some, too. I think we should make that contact information public, someplace where the folks who are interested in writing can go get that. And then, hopefully, we'll encourage them through the various means we have of talking to them, to send those cards and letters on to Raleigh and ahead of our entourage going over there.
And it doesn't necessarily have to go to the term pile authority, because they're willing, ready to move. It goes to the four legislative leaders of that joint oversight.
Maybe if we can make that information available on the website, that would be good.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And you were going to elaborate on the...
Yes, sir. At your, at your last meeting during the public comments section, an issue was raised about whether the College of the Almar did or did not participate in and/or accept a particular federal loan package. There was some conversation ensued, and the board asked me to contact the college to get a response to that. You have at your place is a three-page letter from the president of COA. I will just paraphrase what the letter states. It was confusing. The issue surrounds the William D. Ford Federal Direct Loan Program that the community college, for some time, has not participated in. There was some change in the General Assembly that required them for one single year to pick that back up. There has been legislation that's allowed community colleges to exempt themselves out of that again. COA is one of 24 community colleges that has decided, for various different reasons, to not participate with that program. But it is only one program that is available, and it is a loan program. The president wants to, first of all, first comment she wants to stress is, if anybody has any questions about COA's operation or financial aid, she certainly encourages them to call COA, her office and/or the Office of Assistance there. But COA does participate and does offer several different financial aid packages, sponsorship packages, scholarship packages. So, anybody who is having difficulty attending school, there's certainly opportunities for them. Some of them are flat-out grants, like a Pell Grant that is provided. This particular program is, again, it's a loan program, an interest-bearing loan program. It is very underutilized. Last year, when they were required to provide it, I think the letter says there might have been only nine folks that actually participated in it, because there are preferred and better alternatives available than this particular program. But the bottom line is, this program is not managed and sponsored by COA, but they do manage and sponsor several other student aid, financial assistance programs. And if anybody is having struggles going to COA, if they would contact the school, they'll help them through that process.
Thank you. Does anybody want to stay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to that. The North Carolina Airport Association has a scholarship that's available for aviation-related education. So, that is also an avenue. So, if there is someone that is interested in joining the aviation program at the COA next, I guess, when the...
Spring.
Into spring, please get in touch with me, and I'll direct you to where you need to go to apply for that scholarship through the North Carolina Airport Association.
Hearing no further comments, does anyone want to stay any longer, or will somebody make a motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.